Join to the June 16th 2020 City Council Meeting, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Here.
Solner?
Here.
Bagwell?
Here.
Garza?
Here.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Pastor Daryl Peterson will be giving our prayer this morning. Thank you Daryl.
Thank you. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly and Most Gracious Father, Honorable it is to come before you this morning to lift up the City Council Father and to lift up the leadership and Father just to, just to come Father to know that you're in our presence. Thank you Lord God for the wisdom and the understanding that we all need to have and Father the leadership as they need leadership qualities and abilities and, and Father the people just learn to listen to their heart and flow with their heart Lord God. What's right, what's wrong, what needs to be changed. We thank you for these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Next item please.
Item four, proclamation for Smallville.
Okay, and do we have somebody to accept this? Okay. Okay, well again this year since we've done since 2013, we'll be issuing a proclamation to change our name from Hutchinson to Smallville for one day and here to accept the proclamation is Amy Conkling and Christopher Wiedrich. Whereas the fictional character Clark Kent aka Superman arrived in Smallville Kansas in a spaceship during a meteor shower and whereas the city of Hutchinson and Smallville share many similarities and whereas the city of Hutchinson has formally recognized these similarities since June 21, 2013 when Clark Kent Superman was inducted into the Kansas Hall of Fame, now therefore I Jade Pyros DeCarvallo, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson Kansas, do hereby proclaim that June 21, 2020, the city of Hutchinson be known as Smallville Kansas, the home of Clark Kent and many real superheroes. There you go. I would shake your hand.
You want to say a few words?
Sure.
Good morning. I'm Amy Conkling, Director of Marketing and Development with Hutch Rec. And Hutch Rec has the pleasure of hosting the Smallville Festival each year. This year is, the festival's going to look a lot different obviously. We had to postpone the grand scale event to 2021, much like the Smallville Con. However, we are excited that our June 3rd Thursday is going to continue with a smaller scale Smallville version this coming Thursday, June 18th. We will be set up along downtown Hutchinson from about 5:00 to 8:30 PM with various activities and events and we encourage you to follow the Third Thursday Facebook page as well as the Hutch Rec Facebook page and website for more information on that as we still celebrate Smallville just in a smaller scale version. So thank you. Thank you Amy.
Thank you.
I am going to stall everyone just a minute because Clark Kent is mysteriously not here yet. Who knows what he's doing? I just wanted to tell everyone that, you know, seven years ago when I came up here, we had ideas for what Smallville could become. Never thought I'd be standing up here getting an eighth proclamation for it. Especially when at the time Mayor Bob Bush was quoted as saying, "Who are these people? Are they serious?" So it's come a long way and obviously with Hutch Rec and Smallville Con, it's changed a lot in our community. You know, a lot of people still give me a lot of grief over this being silly, a waste of city tax money, which I don't think this is a huge waste of money. But it also does a lot for tourism and sadly this year, it's another event that's been canceled and not bringing in funding to the city. I know when I was on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, we did a study and this was 2015 I believe, that showed it brought in almost three quarters of a million dollars that week. And I would imagine last year being the biggest year, it was probably closer to a million dollars that week. So it is a very important part of our community and, you know, I'm sad this year. I'm wearing this pin for a friend that I've made over the years. He was really excited to come here this year. He's been a big fan ever since we started and it's crazy that we have this kind of reach. He was going to spend all his vacation money to come to Hutchinson Kansas this year just for Smallville and he's from the UK. So that tells you the kind of pull that this can have on people and the distance it can bring in people. And I did write an editorial that's in the paper today. I encourage you all to read that. That better explains my, my reasoning for what we're doing this year and how we're working with Hutch Rec to kind of recognize everybody that's helped us get through these rough times in the past few months. But I will just quote one thing I put in there by Christopher Reeve and that is, "A hero is an ordinary individual who finds strength to persevere and endure in spite of overwhelming obstacles." And I know there's people in this room and people all over the community that have helped us do that over the past few months, which have been crazy. So I just want to encourage everyone to look around and thank those people for helping us get through a rough time and come out to Third Thursday and have fun with us this year.
Okay, great.
I got a question for you sir.
Yes sir.
Do you know of this kind of Smallville type situation anywhere else in the United States that do this?
Well, there's, part of my inspiration for it was Metropolis Illinois. They're actually really struggling this year. They're a small town of about 4,000 people. But they're on their 43rd year of having a Superman celebration. They have a huge Superman museum, Superman statue. He's on the water tower. So they had to cancel obviously this year, but they've had a long running history of this. There is also a town in Illinois where they did some filming for a movie and their fourth or fifth year of their festival. But ours is definitely the bigger of, of the few. Look at that, good timing. Yeah, we, we definitely have the longest running Smallville.
Well, just so you know, when I became a Commissioner, that was one of the things, one of a lot of things that people told me, "Don't get rid of Smallville." And at the time, I didn't know what the heck they were talking about because...
Well, if you have any questions, you can ask me.
But just to let you know, you do have support out there.
Alright, thank you. I'll turn it over to Clark Kent now.
Such a Clark Kent thing to do. I would like to first thank the City Council, our mayor and the citizens of Hutchinson for once again embracing this Smallville celebration for the eighth year. It's crazy. It's created quite a tradition. So what has this week been about for the past eight years? And I'll try to be brief. I just tried to kind of get my thoughts in. But I think it's really been more about celebrating the idea of Smallville Kansas, the values that it instilled on a young boy that was sent here from another planet, who would use the values that it learned in Smallville Kansas to grow to fight for those values of truth, justice, and the American way. And we celebrate it as a place that instills those values of good over evil, right over wrong, and equality over inequality. So to me, what does a Smallville Kansas look like? I believe Smallville citizens value truth. They are able to wade through seas of misinformation they're confronted with, whether by ways of deceit or merely by neglect or just recklessness. They do this because truth is the foundation for a fair and just society. Smallville Kansas represents the idea that members of the community should seek and acknowledge the truth and when confronted with the truth, learn and grow from their mistakes. I believe citizens of Smallville value justice, but what exactly is justice? Well, justice is about finding the truth. It's about righting wrongs. It's about being able to show our children that it's never too late to stand up for what is right, both morally and logically, and that an injustice should not prevail no matter the, excuse me, the difficulties that may arise from defeating it. I believe further, and this is not something you typically hear with Superman, but that Smallville value, the citizens of Smallville in the idea would value empathy. Despite differences of opinion, the citizens are able to listen to the plight of those who lives are different from their own and attempt to see and understand those differences. Because really without empathy, there could be no truth or justice. These past few months, we as a community have been exposed to heavy challenges, to say the least. Some unprecedented and some that lay stagnant far too long. And it is when we are confronted with these challenges that we really see who the true superheroes are. So this year, we don't have the annual Smallville Con or the typical Smallville Festival, but we can still use this week, and I'm very happy that we can, to celebrate and recognize these heroes. We can use this year's celebration as a statement to the nation and to ourselves that we will strive to be community that stands for truth and justice, that we are empathetic to the struggles of others and will do what is needed to support them, protect them, and lift them up. So we are Hutchinson. But I'd say this week, we are Smallville.
Thanks Clark. Well, thank you all for your leadership on this event and others in the community. So I hope people are able to go out and safely enjoy Third Thursday. Okay, next item please.
Item five, oral communications from the audience.
This is the part of the meeting where people are able to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to five minutes. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to address the council?
Good morning. DeJada, the Human Relations Officer for the City of Hutchinson. I wanted just to come up and share a few things with the community and with the council. As you all know, this last few weeks have been busy and we have been working from my particular position, lots and lots of hours trying to unite community and do things to bring folks to the table and have conversations and, and get ideas about how we can improve the, the community that we live in. So with that, my first message and statement this morning is, is really centered on the position of the Human Relations Officer. As I evaluate the role that I've played in this community and the role that the Commission plays in this community, now if not ever is, is so significant for the Commission to be in position to be a liaison and a supporter and an advocate for the community at large. Because of that, it's my evaluation that the officer position really needs to be reevaluated for a full-time opportunity. I think the work that you'll see coming forward is going to require, is going to require a position that is significantly placed and, and holds a value that is not in a temporary mindset of, of part-time, but in a permanent space of full-time and, and engaged in what we need to do here going forward. So that is my recommendation to the council. I've got a lot of conversation that has been had regarding my position and, and people have asked me, "Can you evaluate? Do you think this position needs to be full-time? What do you think needs to happen?" And today I can stand and say, this is, if not now, when? I think we are at a place in our community and our society that we've got to invest in the work of bringing people together and giving them an opportunity to have successful life here in the community. So that is my, my message to you all and my hope is that you all, I know budget times and budget considerations are significant, but I hope that you can really take a significant look at the position and seeing it in a full-time space. Second piece I wanted to share with you, there was the Supreme Court ruling victory for LGBTQ plus community. That is important for the Commission. We are, have been anticipating this to come and we are looking for the language that we can use to help shift our, our local ordinance to include the language from that civil rights legislation. And then because of that, the committee has been really working to position itself regarding policy evaluation. That includes conversations with the chief and his department. That includes significant engagement in city ordinances and where the disparities could be if there are any and we don't know that. And so those are things that will be coming forth. Another reason why it's significant for this role to be in a full-time space, to help navigate that conversation and that work. And then finally, a little joyous expression. Juneteenth is going to be on Friday, June 19th. The Human Relations Commission felt that it was important for us to platform and sponsor young voices, especially in black and brown communities, to have a space to create an event that's significant to them. We're encouraging everybody to come out. It's going to be the first Juneteenth celebrated here in Hutchinson. And for us, while it's, it's happening a lot, kind of fast and in a pandemic and there's so many layers to all of this that's going on, we hope that it will get the type of participation and attention that it will continue on for years to come. I thank you all for all that you all try to do in this community and I just hope that you hear some of the things that are going on and, and be pushed to action. Thank you.
DeJada, thank you so much. And if you have just a minute.
Yes ma'am.
So much to unpack there, but I want to thank you for your comments. On point number one, couldn't agree more. Absolutely think the position should be full-time. And you're already at a 30-hour position, so I think we need to take a really hard look at the budget and see how to make that happen. On point number two, I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to bring it up in council comments. Yesterday's Supreme Court ruling granting job protections to the LGBTQ workers. I also am wondering about how to bring our local human relations ordinance in alignment with, with those protections. And currently, chapter three of our city code lays out job and housing protections against discrimination, but it does exclude the LGBTQ community. So I don't know if that's something that needs to be unadministratively through our council, our legal, our attorney, or if, if the Human Relations Commission needs to bring back language. What are your thoughts on that? How do we get that rolling quickly?
Yeah, that's kind of the plan. Our meeting for tomorrow, we're going to be reviewing what the language is being shared at that level and how we can fit it into our local ordinances. I think our anticipation is that we can insert it according to the protected classes space and, and use that there. But we're not sure how that will have to look. So we'll kind of create an ideal structure of what we, what we think needs to be in that, in that ordinance and then of course, share it with Paul and, and ask his expertise to make sure that we're framing it properly.
Okay, so we can expect that to come back relatively quickly?
I, I think if we can get to that this Wednesday and, and have that discussion and then depending on, you know, what we might need to do back and forth with Paul, I hope that we can do it pretty quickly. I think that'll depend on, you know, what the dialogue is with, with Paul and what we need to do.
One thing I was, well, I was trying to read, you know, the decision.
Yeah.
And, and kind of, you know, I'm, I'm not an attorney.
I know.
But it seems to be particularly aimed at only job protections.
Yeah.
And since our ordinance includes housing, I mean, I'd like to see us expand it to housing as well, but I didn't know what your thoughts were on that legally, if we could do that or if that would need to go.
You know, it's such a, yeah, it's such a complex piece and because it's so new, there's so much information I just don't have yet and, and so we're going to be diving into that. You know, in our housing space, we add a kind of a pair, parentheses that say families. And so I think if, if there's a way that we can include that, I just don't know and I don't want to get us into territory that puts us in a libel space, but certainly I think some creativity is needed.
Okay, okay. And on Juneteenth, that's going to be at Chester Lewis Plaza, right?
Chester I Lewis Plaza. And the official opening for Chester I Lewis Plaza doesn't happen until the 30th of July, where we'll have a big ribbon cutting and the whole opening of Emancipation Weekend. But this is kind of our first event and we'll have conversations with Mr. Pope about the significance of that park, that plaza, and the future of what we hope to see there.
Okay.
We're really excited.
And that's at four?
It's going to start from 4:30 to 8:30. Trying to capture a, a little after-work folks. We'll have food, we'll have snow cones, cotton candy for the kids, activities for the kids. We've got music and we're bringing back Cakewalk, which is an old tradition. A lot of times happen in, in southern communities, so...
Who's making the cake?
Yeah, I know. We're so excited and, and I can put this claim out here now. If there are folks here who like to bake and want to donate cakes, we're collecting donated cakes from members of the community to, to participate and folks can earn. We're really excited. We've gotten participation from so many different organizations who have donated gift bags. We thank Ms. Bagwell for her contribution so that we could create a really cool, oh, you're going to love these gifts for the kids. Raffle gifts for the kids.
They don't want my cakes. I tried to bake a cake.
Mine neither sir.
You don't want to see my cakes, but yes.
You can buy them or commission somebody to do it.
I tried baking and they fall apart and they, I tried to piece them back together like using...
Oh no.
It just, I...
Totally nailed it, right? Well, thank you again for your contribution. That's going to help us do so, so much fun stuff.
I think it's going to be a fun activity for the kids.
Oh yeah, oh yeah.
And I really just, I think it's going to be fun. I'll be down there bringing my, my three kids with me.
Good deal.
And well, we have, I don't know if you're working with the Health Department on some guidelines?
Yeah.
And I don't know if masks will be available or people are encouraged to bring their own?
Yeah, certainly. Nick Valdetti was really helpful for us when we were planning the rally at the courthouse. And so we reached out to him again and kind of gave him the same parameters that he helped us kind of navigate previously. We'll have sanitizer on, on hand and some of the folks that, so masks have contributed some masks to provide. But we are certainly trying to continue that. Social distancing and those protections. We know it can be difficult for people to do that, but if anything, people just put their mask on at least to slow some of that transference of particles, so.
Okay.
We'd be happy to donate some man sanitizer.
Come on. We'll take them, we'll take them.
That's a great idea. Thank you very much.
Yes. We're really excited and, and everything that we're trying to do is really geared towards providing space for communities that maybe have not had a space to speak out and, and to vision and implement their vision of what their community could look like. So we're really excited and grateful for the young leadership and we're taking their direction.
For sure. Well, thanks for all your work on this. I know you're not working part-time, so.
Not recently.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright Stephen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think I know pretty much everybody personally, but just a quick introduction in case we haven't been formally introduced. My name's Stephen Peterman. I'm the owner, operator, managing member of Salt City Brewing Company. I'm not specifically familiar with all the procedural council procedure, but I believe first, I was not on the agenda. I was a day late getting my application in. We're trying to put on a community event, looking for a special, a resolution for a special entertainment district.
Mayor, allow me to interrupt at this point. The only thing you need to do to decide is whether or not this will be added to the agenda. When it is, it'll be heard as item 7B under New Business.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we just, we just need, do we need a motion to?
You need a motion to add it to the agenda.
Okay, I will move to add the request for a special event to the agenda as item 7B.
I'll second.
Please call roll.
Okay. Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Stephen. Sorry, you're going to have to hang out a little bit longer.
I got plenty to do, I'm sure you do too.
Okay, are there others in the audience who would like to address the council on items that aren't on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Please call the next item.
Item six, consent agenda.
Any questions or a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I would just like to point out before we call roll that David Setello is in the audience and we are voting on his appointment to the Human Relations Commission. Really happy to have this young leader back in our community and happy to see you joining the Commission, so thank you. Is there further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item please.
Item 7A, consider 2019 audit.
The exciting stuff.
Very exciting. Angela Richard, Director of Finance. We are here today to present the 2019 audit. I have with me Randy Hoffmeyer. He's the lead auditor for our audit from Lindbergh, Vogel, Pierce Ferris. He is going to introduce the audit. And then I'll walk you through some of the highlights on the financial statements.
Good morning. First thing I want to do, there's a letter that's not bound with the financial statements. It's the communication with those charged with governance. This letter is required by Statement on Auditing Standards Number 114. I'm not going to read it to you because I don't want your eyes to glaze over, but I'll just hit the highlights. The first paragraph just states that we audited the financial statement. And we issued a report on April 14, 2020. Significant audit matters is the next bullet point. Talks about management's responsibility for the selection of appropriate accounting policies. There were no new accounting policies. The next bullet has to do with accounting estimates. There's really no significant accounting estimates other than the note disclosure for the net pension liability for Kpers and KPNF. And financial statement disclosures were neutral, consistent, and clear. Difficulties encountered in performing the audit? We really had no difficulties. This was probably the smoothest year since I've been working on the audit. And that's been since 2012. I would say a lot of that has to do with your staff. It has to do with your new software. I think that they've worked out a lot of the problems that they had with it. There weren't that many problems. But it's just more the conversion process. On the next page, the head, next heading is Corrected and Uncorrected Misstatements. We had no audit adjustments that we had to propose. And there were no uncorrected misstatements, except for any things that were trivial, you know, just really small items. We had no disagreements with management. We provided a management representation letter to the city manager and the finance director, which they agreed to the representations in the letter. To my knowledge, there were no consultations with other independent accountants. And we had no other audit findings or issues. One thing about this year, too, is you weren't required to have a single audit, which is an audit of your federal financial assistance. There's a threshold for that. That's $750,000 of expenditures. And you were below that threshold this year. So if you turn to page one of your financial statements, we have the Independent Auditor's Report. The first paragraph just basically states that, again, that we've audited the financial statement. The next paragraph discusses management's responsibility for the financial statement. The following paragraphs include the auditor's responsibility. Onto page two. Because we perform the audit and you present your financial statements in accordance with the Kansas Municipal Audit Guide, which is a regulatory basis of accounting, we have to provide an adverse opinion on GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. So we give that adverse opinion. Then we turn around and we say that our opinion on the city's financial statement presented in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting was unmodified. Then there's a section on the Report on Supplementary Information that would include everything behind the financial statement, which would be page five through the end of the financial report. And because you present comparative information, we include some information regarding the comparative statements, comparative information. Any questions?
I have a very elementary question, I'm sure. Under Note 1, Summary of Significant Accounting Policies, where you kind of detail how our fund accounting is laid out and how each of those funds are their own separate accounting entity. I was wondering, for the purposes of each of those funds being its own entity, some of them have significant reserves. One thing we were looking at is, in this difficult budget year, are all the reserves and all the funds? So since each is a separate accounting entity, would sweeping any reserves into the general fund from those separate accounting entities negatively affect the audit? That's, is that like a pretty bad practice?
What reserves are you talking about?
So we have reserves in several of our funds that are, they come from different revenue streams, like sewer reserves, street reserve fund. And I just don't know how that works with each of them being a separate accounting entity.
There are statutes that say what you can use different funds for, including your utility funds, your tax levy funds, though they are basically levied for a particular purpose. And you cannot use those funds for other purposes.
Okay.
You can, if you have sufficient utility funds, use that to, you know, help soften the blow, so to speak, for any shortfalls in revenue or anything like that, if there are sufficient funds in those reserves.
Okay.
That answer your question?
Yeah, it does, actually. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
This year, I'd like to walk you through the financial statements and how to read them a little bit, just the highlights, since we have a few new council members. So on page four, you'll see the beginning unencumbered cash balance in the far-left column. That's the amount of cash that we brought into the year that is not committed to any contracts or any liabilities. We then add the receipts and subtract out the expenditures. And we get to the ending unencumbered cash balance. That's the third column from the right. So that is the amount of cash in each of those funds that we are able to use. It's unrestricted. It's not committed to any contracts. So you will see that we started out the year in total, if you look at the very bottom line, with $43 million of unencumbered cash. We ended with $40 million. And if we look at where that comes from, you see that the general fund, clear at the top, we increased our unencumbered cash there by $500,000. You'll also see that most of the cash that was committed was from our capital improvement funds. You'll see that it went from $14 million to $8 million. A lot of that is because we had committed to contracts for Main Street and for Cow Creek. We were doing renovations at Fun Valley. So a lot of that was committed, but not necessarily spent yet. Are there any questions on that? That is our main financial statement. And the rest of your report here is explanations and supplementary information.
Based on our assessed valuation and our bonded indebtedness, are we, do we stay in line with that ratio? We are below the normal best practice?
We, we at least meet the legal requirements. We do that for sure. We can look at that more with the budget and those conversations. But I don't think we're out of line.
You recall what that ratio is or that percentage?
I don't have that with me.
It used to be around 15, 18%. And I don't know if that's changed dramatically or not.
I don't think it would have changed.
It would not have changed substantially.
And by statute, we have to be under 30%?
Under 35%, I think.
I think that's right.
30 or 35%?
I always think of 25, but I'm probably wrong. I could be wrong.
Okay. So we're certainly well below the statute.
Yes.
Which is good.
Yes.
Which brings me to the next thing I was going to point out. So page five starts the explanations of how we do our accounting. But then if you turn to page 10, this is our schedule of debt. So you'll see where we started the year with total debt at $67 million. We did some refinancing in 2019. All the new debt was refunding or refinancing of old debt. We refinanced all our loans with the KHE and rolled them into GEO bonds because we could get a better interest rate. So you'll see we ended the end of the year with $58 million of debt. The table below that then schedules out our debt payments for both GEO bonds and capital leases for 2020 through 2024. And then it groups it. So you can see what our obligations will be there. Page 11 starts at the bottom of it, our inter-fund transfers. So you can see where we have transferred money and the statute authority that was granted so that we could move that fund. So when you were talking about moving funds from reserves to other funds, specifically our general fund, we would have to check the state statutes and see what's allowed and what authority we have to move those funds. Okay.
So Angela, again, a kind of a fundamental question. Your explanation on page 10 of the beginning year balance of $67 million, the bonded indebtedness is down to $58. Does that, does that impact the bond and interest mill levy on a budgetary year?
Yes, it does. Our debt load and how much we're paying annually does affect our mill levy. We try to keep that fairly consistent. So we look at all the different funds that go into the bond and interest fund. So our debt limit, our debt outstanding may go up. But we also have to consider that some of that debt is from sewer funds or water funds. And so the sewer and water fund will reimburse the bond and interest fund. And we look at that when we budget to make sure that our mill levy isn't going to change substantially. That is one thing we do consider. And so in 19, we didn't have a lot of new debt. But as I warned you in 2020, we do have a lot of projects that we will bond, so.
So has this changed our bond rating? I think we had a report earlier this year about we improved our bond rating.
We did. And part of the reason for that change in rating, they took the negative outlook, or I don't know if it was a negative outlook. I'd have to look back. But they did bump that up a little bit because of our general fund cash balance. That was the main change. It wasn't our total debt outstanding necessarily, but they were looking at our general fund cash.
Our general fund balance.
But they do look at our total debt. If we were to issue a massive amount, they would consider that. It would affect our bond rating.
You recall what our current rating is? And I get confused with what those numbers mean, what those ratings mean?
I would have to look. I'm at a loss for some reason, and I can't remember what that was.
We've got a good bond rating.
We do.
Yeah.
We do.
30%, sir. 30, not 25, but 30.
Is it 30%? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. The next thing I wanted to highlight was page 17. This schedule outlines what our certified budget with the state says we can spend versus what we actually spent. So the very far column on the right, you want to make sure those are all negative. And they are for us this year. We didn't have any funds that went over their certified budget. So we didn't have any budget violations. The rest of the report is the detail on all the funds. And so you can go over that if you would like. But those are the highlights that I wanted to go over. Are there any other questions? Then I recommend that you do a motion to accept the audit.
I will move to approve the 2019 audit performed by Lindbergh, Vogel, and Pierce and Ferris, chartered as presented.
Second. Okay, is there further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyros Day Carvalho?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 7B, Salt City Brewfest.
Now.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Council, you have before you a application for authorization of a special event for the Salt City Brewfest. It is scheduled for July 4, 2020, from noon to midnight in the 500 block of North Main. I've listed some issues to be considered by the council. Want to give an opportunity for Mr. Peterman to speak. And then also, Chief Hooper would like to address the council regarding this issue. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi there.
Good morning. Good morning. Thanks for your patience.
Appreciate you taking the time.
And this is, is this the same block that normally kind of gets blocked off when there's stuff down there? I know sometimes when I go down.
We did an event almost exactly like this last year. It was the Pheasants Forever kicking in Thicket. And we did the same thing, blocked off from 5 to 600.
Yeah, because I know I've seen that area blocked off before.
Was it blocked off on both sides last year?
When you say both sides, the entire street was blocked off. We put concrete barriers for three of the lanes. And then they had to have one lane open for fire and emergency access, so. And we'll do the same this year.
Now, do you typically confer with the businesses on that street to get their buy-in?
Yes, and I've submitted, almost all of them have signed it. Just, nobody's open anyway, and they've all signed it. I've submitted that along with the application. There's a, basically a diagram of the event with the times and dates and that we're having live music. And almost all those on the block have signed it.
Steve, do you fence this off or barricade it off?
Barricaded, right.
You barricade it, is that how you do it?
Right.
And you remove all vehicles on the street or?
There won't be any vehicles in the block other than we'll have a beer trailer there. We'll have a flatbed trailer for a stage. We'll have some food truck there. But right there, there's no access to the event area by outside public motor traffic.
Now, when you did it last year, did you have it blocked off for that amount of time? Like 10 hours? That seems like a long time.
Ah, you know, I don't remember the exact amount of time we did. It was, you know, afternoon and evening event. I don't remember. I think it was 11 o'clock or something like that.
Well, do you want to talk a little bit about the event you're trying to do?
Sure.
Let's hear it.
It's just, we've talked for the past several years about trying to do some things like this for the community. We never seem to get it done. And this year, I got a lot of pressure here just lately to, just a lot of people wanting to do something like this. So went ahead and put together this planned event, and I'm submitting it. Basically, it's a free event for the community. It'll be focused more on, I would say, younger kids and family during the day. And then about 8 o'clock, we'll have live music. I wouldn't call it necessarily a street dance, but it could certainly be one. I mean, it's just basically, the solers will be coming to perform. We typically do something similar to this on our own premises. And what we're asking for here is just to extend that onto the main street, allow for more people, some more event-type things. I'm getting all kinds of suggestions right now for things such as face painting and just all kinds of fun events for kids to do during the day. And we'll keep in contact with Baldetti and his group on what they believe to be safe. on what, what they believe to be safe, but so far, we've, we've talked to them already, and they didn't have any, any problems with us hosting the event, so.
So they basically approve what you're proposing? Okay.
Yeah, I already talked to their office, and she called me back and said, "That's fine. They just want us to let them know." And we're planning on having more than a hundred individuals congregating, so.
How are, how do you propose to control that number?
We're not proposing to control that number. They're saying, they, we just have to notify them if you have over a hundred. We're saying we're expecting several hundred, two to three hundred participants probably, so. And they, we let them know that as well, so.
Any other guidelines or requirements that they have?
That they, that they impose on us? No. We obviously have more hand sanitizer any place in Reno County, so we'll be good there. No, they have not given us any, any, they didn't, you know, we'll, we'll just encourage people to maintain. We looked at our patio, and our patio is only four thousand square feet, and we can put a hundred and thirty-three people on our patio and maintain six feet distance, and the, the block is obviously orders of magnitude bigger than our, our patio is. In fact, I called Jim Sightnearer the other day, haven't heard back from him, just asked if he knew off the top of his head how many square feet are in a city block, so, but.
Now, can you talk to us a little bit about this three sixty security and kind of your?
Yes, and I'm open to, I've got a call into Chief Hooper's staff regarding security. Shawn Harper operates three sixty security. He's provided security for other events. It's a professional business of his. He's proposed having four of his security on, on premises to, you know, just watch things and, and take care of problems that might arise, so. Chief Hooper was saying there'd be some additional police presence regardless that, that would have to, and I, I think that's something to have to visit about. It's a free event, as long as we can keep it, I mean, I can't personally afford to do everything, but if, if it's something we need to do, we'll either get sponsors, donations, or we just won't be able to have the event. So we'll do everything we can to do, have it. We're going to have, regardless of what happens with the street, we'll have a Fourth of July event on our premises. We'll have the patio and the band and things like that, but this would be an opportunity for more community involvement, a little larger scale, and more things for, for the community to do, so.
Do they allow beer off-premise in the streets?
We need the, the, the council's special entertainment district resolution, and then, yes, then we submit to ABC, and then they extend our premises. We're not asking for temporary permit because we have a DE drinking establishment license for the brewery. They just allow us to extend that premise onto the street as long as the, the council authorized the resolution for special entertainment.
The state does?
Yeah.
I had one question about how this works with the Patriots Parade. The Patriots Parade typically, it's, it's definitely done by noon, but, you know, I, this sounds like it might have significant setup, so I'm not sure how that timing.
It, 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 it does sound like, but it really, it really happens in a hurry. Greg Ray has concrete barriers on a truck. He just comes in, sets them down. I mean, I, I think we'll be set up in a matter of, you know, thirty, forty-five minutes.
Okay.
Have you been in contact with the people that put on the Patriots Parade?
I have not. I mean, we, we, every year, right after the Patriots Parade, they come into the brewery anyway. We're not doing, we, whether it starts at noon, if they, if they go beyond that, I'm not going to be pressing anybody. We're not in any, there's no urgency to start at noon, I mean.
I just know that a lot of families line up along Main in their vehicle, so I want to be really respectful. I don't want to, I don't want them to be boxed in because they don't know about this event, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
There, there's no urgency to, to getting this started. I mean, this is.
You could move it back.
Yeah, we can move three o'clock if, if, I mean, I, I would like to, to get it authorized from noon to midnight, and if we need to wait till three o'clock to set up, that doesn't change anything I'm doing. I mean, we'll still. Most of our, you know, entertainment and things will be later in the, in the day, eight o'clock. We may, we've got several bands that have also contacts that would like to perform, and we may let them go earlier if it's, if it's feasible. If it's not, it's not.
I got one thing. Are you going to offer any masks to people that would want one? I mean, is there any way to do that?
I, I don't think we will be. I wouldn't say I wouldn't consider it. I, I've, I, I see so much mixed things on it. I, I'll do what Baldetti's group tells us we have to do, but other than that, I don't, I don't intend to, no.
Okay. Well, the biggest thing on that is, I mean, people want to wear masks, so wear masks. We're all adults, so we need to get one, get one. Okay.
And he says he's got hand sanitizing.
Yep. Gallons and gallons and hundreds of gallons.
Any questions before we get the chief up for his thoughts?
So have there been any incidences in previous years, Steve, that?
No.
No, it's been pretty, pretty quiet and pretty normal, as you experienced it?
The only thing different this year from the, the prior one is the prior event was more of an adult event. This will include things for younger children earlier in the day, so other than that, no, we didn't have any incidents. I, I, I wouldn't make aware of anything in the last.
And I haven't, I haven't reviewed all this material here, but you have, you contract with private security, is that correct?
Right. I contacted three sixty security, Shawn Harper, and he's agreed to provide four individuals for our security. But again, I've got a call in the Chief's Hooper staff to, to discuss that, whether they think that's sufficient and whether, I mean, I, we're comfortable with it, but.
Is there city ordinance to where you have to have, there's a, where we supply police for events?
It's not required, at least, at least not in your policy, it's not. I don't know if, if there's something that's outside of the policy that.
Our, our special events policy.
What was the question?
She wanted to know if our special events policy required using Hutch Police Department.
It doesn't require using Hutchinson Police. It requires a security plan.
A security plan.
I just wanted to clarify that. So if he had the security and we felt it was sufficient enough, then that's obviously going to take up some of the costs from having to have additional police there if we were able to reduce the police. I'm saying like it'd be, he's providing a cost savings to the city. They do have that plan there, correct? By not having to have, to have so many police there?
I think Chief Hooper's going to address you on that.
Okay.
Well, Stephen, do you mind sticking around in case we have other questions? And Chief, do you mind giving us your thoughts?
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Chief Hooper. You know, Mr. Peterman's been a great, you know, kind of advocate of our community, bringing these events in, and I'm certainly not opposed to events. Obviously, my concern is for safety of the community, and, and I'm also looking at the financial situation that we're involved in now. There's a lot of events going on that day. We have the Patriot Parade. We have the Fourth of July event that night, and this kind of sandwiched in the middle there. The Patriot Parade itself is going to require an excess of twenty officers on overtime. And then we have the Fourth of July celebration and fireworks that night, and so our resources are already kind of tasked. I have some, some safety concerns about the event. He's done a really good job putting a safety plan together, but, you know, I worry about the entire block being cordoned off. We've talked last year in reference to a couple of events, and he's done a good job getting those hard barricades planned for this event, which is one of my major concerns because of traffic just driving into a crowd like that. I do worry about emergency vehicle access, getting through there. That's going to limit, especially fire, and law enforcement will have to go around that for our response times. But for this event especially, some of the things I worry about are controlled access to the event. This is basically an open saloon in the street, and there's no fencing up, and so while alcohol will be allowed on that block, we can't allow alcohol, alcohol outside of that event. And the event dumps right out on either Fifth Street or Sixth Street, which are those cross streets there. And I don't want possibly intoxicated persons or people after dark walking out into those, those blocks. So how are we going to control that access and keep people on the sidewalks? How are we going to keep alcohol inside the event without alcohol wandering outside of the event, especially as we get towards the evening hours? I'm certainly not opposed to the private security. When I was looking at this event, I figured it would probably require four of my officers for an event this size. If he's going to have private security, then I'm looking at probably placing two officers down there. So that's, you know, two officers for twelve hours. That's twenty-four hours of overtime. And if you'll indulge me for a second, I'd like to kind of back up just a little bit because I want to talk. It's not only about this event. It's about a lot of the events in the community and these private events, because several of them are starting to pop up post-COVID nineteen. And traditionally, what we've done as a city is we've provided resources for those private events, and we've, we have them charged for a lot of those resources and taxing on city finances. And I think you guys all kind of, you know better than me even where we're at, but if you back up to, when I first got here, you remember our crime rate? We were the bottom-five city. We were the fifth-worst city in crime rate in the state of Kansas. And we had no good relationship between the police department and the community. All of last year, we worked really hard to build up that relationship, those community engagements, those community initiatives, and, and attending those community events and really making that connection with the community. We also implemented our intelligence-led policing strategy and implemented crime reduction strategies. And we were successful because we lowered our crime rate by twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight percent. But you guys know that we, we, that took overtime hours to do that. Because of our shortage of manpower, we still gave back a half million dollars, but we had to use overtime for that. So, and there are times in this city with our shortage of manpower that we're short resources on the street, just responding to regular calls. So when we talk about events like this, it requires overtime to do these events. And with COVID nineteen hitting and our shortfalls, we obviously had to cut back on all our overtime. And I was up here a few months ago committing to you that we would eliminate all non-essential overtime, and we've done that. But what has happened is that means we have not been able to engage in those community events, and those things are really important, I think, for our relationship and connection with the community. But also, we've not been able to engage in a lot of our crime reduction strategies, and that's having an effect on our community. At the end of April, at the end of January, we were still utilizing those stat, those, those crime reduction strategies. And at the end of January, we'd lowered crime another one point seven percent. But post-eliminating that overtime, by the end of April, crime has gone up two percent. By the end of May, my last statistics, crime in communities back up four point four percent, and violent crime is up eight point eight percent. The crime reduction strategies that we were implementing on overtime were effective, and we've, we've cut back on those. We're not able to do those. And so crime is creeping back up, and I don't want to get back to where we were before, where we have a high crime rate in the city, because I think that affects a lot. It affects commerce. It affects people wanting to come here, businesses wanting to come here, and that's super important to me. And so when we look at these private events, I have a really hard time justifying the city paying for those resources when we can't pay for the protection of our community and those crime reduction events. So if we're going to have these type of events, I would encourage the council that if, if private companies want to put on those events, and we say it's going to take this for security or this for resources, I think those costs ought to be incurred by the event planner or the event organizer and not by the community, because I think there's more important things that we should be spending our resources on.
What is our current policy on these special events, and haven't we addressed this previously as far as overtime?
We, we have addressed it, and we charge it to the events, but the chief is talking about officers who aren't in the event. They're in the area because of the event, and we don't charge for that.
Yeah, in this case, for example, it would require two officers assigned to this event outside of regular duties, and those would be overtime. And our overtime, what we charge for, if we contract out for like the movie theater and football games, where we contract out and we're reimbursed for those officers overtime, that's at fifty-five dollars an hour, because that's the city's cost for an officer. And so if I've got to assign two officers to this event for twelve hours each, that's twenty-four hours at fifty-five dollars an hour that it's going to cost the city unless we have the events compensate the city for that security.
Which if they're not charging admission is going to be practically impossible to do.
I would say this, and I, I appreciate everything the chief is saying. It, it comes to a constraint. I don't, this is not a financial gain for me. I'm, I can do the same thing in my, this is the community asking me, wanting to do something. And, and I'm, this is not something that I'm, I, I'm okay with whatever. If the city wanted to charge time, I, I would try to get businesses to sponsor and, and provide it. If they wouldn't do it, we, we just wouldn't hold the event at the bottom line.
Chief, I had a question about your statistics that said crime was going up in March and April, but didn't you also concurrently with, with that crime going up, implement a phased response plan due to COVID nineteen where you weren't going out as often? And so would that be another explanation for some of the uptick in crime because it was communicated to the community that you weren't going to be responding to calls?
I certainly think, I certainly think that would be part of it, but also, there's a lot of factors. There was also a lot less people out in our community, a lot less activity, and so there weren't as many people out to commit crimes, and, you know, obviously, we had a reduced response, and then even more so without any additional planning or. But I, I can tell you right now that through my intent, we have a, we have an intelligence briefing and an, and an entire intelligence function once every two weeks where we address emerging crime trends. We address areas in this community where we're starting to see the uptick in crime, and we're able to deploy resources towards those. And we simply have drug houses popping up, or we have emerging violent crime, obviously, being up eight point eight percent in different parts of the community, that normally we would deploy resources to counter that crime and eliminate it out of our community, and we haven't been able to do that very effectively just simply because of, we're not, we can't commit overtime to that. So we're trying to find that balance there.
Wasn't there an uptick just because of nationally, for domestic? Because of people just being at home with the spouses?
And the increased unemployment. I mean, there, there's so many things that I think we're trying to conflate.
And then, do we have a long-term strategy so that we can, might be something that we talk during the budget, but that way we could provide these services to the community without them being overtime by adding more police staff?
Well, I think we could look at going to eights if we're still concerned with all this overtime on tens, but I.
Madam Mayor, I, we are, we're on twelves, and the, the, the plan that we have in place is to maximize the prevention of overtime, is the plan that we have in place, and still try to remain efficient with our, with our law enforcement resources.
How, if you were to throw an eye, how many officers would you need to be added to the force in order to provide this service to the community without it being overtime, is my question.
Yeah, and, you know, I hate to go off of averages, but if you look at, they do a study in the nation every year, and if you look at, and forget the nationals, national stats, if you look at national stats, we should have about eighty-nine officers. If you look at what it says in the state of Kansas, so if you take the whole entire state of Kansas and you do officer per capita, so officer for, for thousand residents, by that statistic in Hutchinson, with about forty thousand people, we should have a hundred and six officers. We have seventy-five. I wouldn't ask for a hundred and six officers, because I think that we can be way more efficient than that. But we are understaffed anyway, and so.
Do we have new officers coming on soon?
We do, and, you know, the, the effect is, is that while we have done really good with increasing our staff, because we were short about twenty-five officers when I took this job over, and now we're short six. But I also have eight in training, so effectively, we're working fourteen short.
Because my, my, the reason why I'm asking all these questions is you guys did a great job at reducing the overtime, and now we're asking you to increase overtime because of all the events. And so I think we need to kind of weigh, well, we did save some costs by reducing the overtime, so maybe we have a little bit of overtime to have the community engagement. I know that, and it's just a small one, but I know that in Placerville, California, they have this where they block off the entire Main Street, and they have what's called Brew Fest, and all the microbreweries set up stands. And the people that go in have a bracelet put on, and there's no outside containers allowed in, and there's a certain cup, and that's all the person's allowed to use so that you can identify whether people are bringing alcohol outside of the event, because they're only allowed to use designated cup, and they have a wristband identifying that they've been at the event. And the entire Main Street gets shut down, and all the microbreweries from all around come and they set up in the local shops. So you might, and people come in, and it's almost like a pit where you have your cup, and you get to taste all the different microbreweries that are around in that area, and it's an all-day event, and, and it has gone over very well. But like I said, they did have the designated cup, no outside containers, and you had to have a wristband identifying that you're a part of the event.
Well, I'm certain, and I'm, I'm certainly for events like this. I think they're good for our community. I'm, I'm not unfamiliar with events like that, coming from Manhattan and having the bar district, and we would have events like that all the time where we'd shut everybody, we'd shut off. We'd only require certain containers. We'd have wristbands. But those draw law enforcement resources, you know, we would have thirty or forty cops in an event like that sometimes. And so those just draw city resources, and so I'm just asking the council to take a look at where we prioritize our resources, because I only have so many, I have so many resources to go around.
Well, maybe we look at establishing a budget for these private events, because I certainly, I, I'm not sure I'm in favor of charging. What if it was a nonprofit putting this on? Would we, would we have the same kind of conversation? I mean, the reason we don't charge, our philosophy has been, we don't charge, because we're already charging, we're charging taxes. You pay taxes, those taxes pay for first responders, and so to add an additional cost seems overly burdensome to these businesses and organizations trying to put on these events, so. But I get that we can't do that, you know, infinitely. We, we have finite resources, and, and maybe that's a larger conversation during the budget. You know, we have these, we have a budget.
For whatever it's worth, and it's not, again, it, it gained up.
You want to come up? Yep.
The one thing I would say. The one thing I would say, I think, you know, just in our particular instance, we donated $7,000 of sanitizer to Reno County that they would have had, I mean, we could have charged Reno County for that. We were authorized to charge any police fire, emergency response. In our case, and again, I don't, this isn't that big a deal that I'm, but there's just an example, though, I guess, of where, you know, Reno County saved $7,000 on something that was required due to COVID, so anyway.
Yes, and, and I honestly had that discussion prior after I reached, said, you know, Salt City did come in and make sanitizer, give to the community, was here when we needed them. I'm for it. I'm saying, let's do it, let's let them have a community thing. I understand, but he's given to the community, we can give back.
And we're for the event, too. I mean, if this, what the city wants to do, have the event, I'm totally for that. We'll provide the appropriate resources for it. I just wanted to have the opportunity to, so you guys were informed on what those resources mean to the city.
Yeah, for sure.
And he's having his own private security, too.
And I definitely-
We can also try to, I mean, we could do some fundraising things. We can try, I mean, there's a lot, the community's been incredibly supportive of us, and I think if we'd asked people for some help in this, I think we'd get it. So that's something else I guess I would offer, is we can go out there. I can't pay for it, I can't do it. It's not, that's not the type of event it is. We'll get our drinkers in the patio, in the brewery, we'll have our band in there if we can't have it on the street, but if others will donate somebody to help defray those expenses, I'd be happy to reach out to at least.
Well, I just wanted to say that I really respect your comments, chief, because your eye is always on your mission to protect the community and to keep our crime rate as low as we can keep it, and to make these events as safe as possible. And I know that that's the lens through which you see everything, which is why you're in the position you're in. But we're also in the position of like risk management, and you know, any of these events could be dangerous. You know, we've had a couple of rallies, those could have gone south, and I mean, anything bad can happen at any time, and I just, I don't want to send the message that this council is, you know, wants to kill the spirit of community unity gathering events. I mean, we're in COVID, so I don't really want people to gather and not practice social distancing, so that's, that's one part of this, another layer, but, but just looking forward, I don't, I don't want to discourage people from trying to put these type of community unifying events on.
Mayor, with your indulgence, could I have about 30 seconds?
Please, please, I'd love to hear your thoughts on this.
Looks like the last event was held on June 14th, staff informs of 19, and it was from a period of 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It was not a total blockage of the block, there was access allowed for emergency response. As submitted, maybe not discussed, but as submitted, it shows a complete closure of the roadway, which is problematic for emergency responders, maybe not on June 14th when this was last held, but certainly on July 4th when we anticipate increased call volume.
When you say complete blockage, we're not proposing complete blockage. There's a, there's a black diagram showing the concrete barriers, and then in the security letter describes the movable barriers across the whole width and concrete barriers for three of the four lanes is what we did, that's what we are proposing again.
Whatever the configuration may be, I think it might be worthy of consideration of the body if you guys were compelled to take action on this, to at least ensure through your approval that some sort of unencumbered access, so we're not having to move barriers so an engine can run and not be hindered by its response time. We do have communication from fire indicating that this would in fact hamper our response times if that roadway were blocked, so that's something to consider.
I really appreciate those comments, because we know people are going to be shooting off fireworks, even though they shouldn't be in city limits. So I'd like to hear your thoughts, Stephen, on how you could kind of alter this or revise this to make it more in alignment with what needs to happen with the fire department.
I mean, again, I'm flexible. I've contacted Tony Arpa, and he indicated to me he was fine with it the way it was, like we did for Pheasant Forever. I've already talked to him, but if there's someone else I need to visit with, I'll be happy to. We're flex, this is not something, I mean, we're, we'll adapt to whatever the change situation is, so.
Steve, I've worked with the city through three years, and we've had these events, Hutch Fest, and everything went off like a charm. I don't see the real problem, just like Hutch Fest. I mean, it's, it's not, nothing new to Hutchinson, we've done this stuff before. If I remember right, when I was electrician for the city of Hutch, I hooked up Hutch Fest. I think we did have one run in there, and they went right through the middle of the Hutch Fest, the fire department. And what I did notice when they did have Hutch Fest, they had people where the barricades were, these weren't concrete barricades, they were just, and the people moved the fire, the barricades out of the way, they were assigned for that area, and they moved the barricades to let the fire people in, and the police department, so on. Like I said, I'm thinking that this has been done before, it's nothing new to Hutch.
What we're hoping is that this eventually morphs into something more like that. This is kind of, you know, starting again, beta testing it, if you will, and then if it's successful, continue to expand it down.
The only thing that I remember that's done a little different, do you have a block off area with, back when Hutch Fest was at their last, or was it the car rally thing? It wasn't called Hutch Fest, what was the car rally called?
The Rod Run?
The Rod Run, they had a specific area they fenced off that the drinkers had to stay in that one area.
Again, I think in the scope of things we're doing, that's what we're doing. We're blocking off one block. Now, if we were doing 10 city blocks or five city blocks, I think we would do that. The only alternative I see at this point to that is that we, I mean, and it's, I think a little bit counterintuitive for what we're trying to accomplish, is to put the band out on the street and tell the drinkers they got to stay in the patio. I'm not saying it can't work at all.
No, it's, it's worked before. We've had bands in the middle of the street, we've had-
I think of the Miami, we used to have the big fair down there, and you could drink on some of the-
I guess the question is whether, I understand what you're saying, and again, if the scope of the event was 10 blocks, I definitely see the need to do that. I would defer to Chief Hooper on whether one block is manageable as a-
No, we've managed multiple blocks, from all the way from Second Street all the way down to B Street.
So at this point, we're intending to ask the state of Kansas, ABC, to authorize, as an extension of premises, that would include that entire city block then for-
Well, I would like to, if you could, see it modified to allow for access to the fire engines as the city manager-
I thought he did, I thought he already had it in there.
That's what I, that's what, that's what I thought, it's a one movable barrier type of thing.
It looks like it-
It just says prohibit vehicles from all four lanes of traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you read-
The drawing doesn't really-
But if you read, if emergency vehicles access is required, the removable barriers will be moved promptly to allow access. The removable barriers are required in front of the concrete barriers because-
This doesn't show it well, I guess.
So chief, do you think it's safer or less safe to have the removable barriers on that one?
My preference would be, the problem is when there's an emergency response, how are they going to know that we're coming, and who's going to remove those barricades, and do we have to wait? So my preference would be that the far westbound lane across from his brewery, we just don't block that lane off. We just contain the event, and we put barriers north and south, and allow one lane access there only for emergency vehicles to come on that block, and we would just leave that open as an egress.
Yeah, see, this makes it look as though there's no access anywhere.
Right, and with-
That's my fault, the dark box of the concrete barriers, and it only goes three quarters of the way, that's my-
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, okay.
Because I think if we, if we limit the crowd to the eastern three lanes, the foot traffic and everything, and just allow them up towards Salt City Brewery, and we allow that one lane for vehicle traffic, and we separate pedestrians from vehicle traffic, that's the safest way to-
So he'll need to have a fence.
Yeah, well, so we put, we put barricades across there.
Yeah, you're saying-
We wouldn't allow regular traffic through during the time.
We wouldn't allow regular traffic, but what we would do at the end of those blocks for emergency traffic is we'd set some, we'd close that lane down, and we'd set some barricades up, but we'd allow emergency vehicles to drive around it so they could have access. So the general public wouldn't have access to that traffic-wise, but emergency vehicles would be able to get through there, for example. We'd put some signage up in that effect, I think, and that still separates pedestrians from vehicle traffic, but allows emergency vehicles to drive through there.
See, we can come together and make this work.
I'd be more comfortable with that, yeah. Are you cool, are you cool with that?
They'll still have, I think, plenty of room for their festival, and yeah, to answer your question, we can, we can maintain safety of a festival in that block. I think that's really easy to do. You know, like I said, if he's got private security, I feel real comfortable with that, and you know, we know them, we'll have a couple officers out there to assist and help with pedestrians and things like that, but it's an event we certainly can pull off safely.
Steve, the only thing I see is the council, we're dealing with budget crisis right now, you understand that? And if you can come up with some donations to help pay for the police, because we're going to catch it, I do think we need this in the city of Hutchinson, we need to come together. But that's the only problem I have.
I would be very surprised if we can't accomplish that. We've got, like I said, there's, there's a lot of wonderful people in Hutchinson, not just supporting us, but the entire community, I think we could, we'll certainly try that, and I think we'll be successful.
I would see if you can do that, because like I said, it's a budget time right now, and the people are going to come and-
We're not charging any other, we're not going, I'm, I'm going to disagree with you on that one. I'm disagreeing for the fact that we're not charging any of the other events right now.
Okay.
So we can't just be selective. We have to make sure that we are across the board even, and-
I appreciate that.
He's been here for the community, he made that hand sanitizer, he's given-
Well, I think Rod Run pays for private security.
He's paying for private security.
Yeah, I mean, they pay, I know they have that listed as private security, so, I mean, it's not like we're not charging others, anyway, yeah.
I think it's just, the chief's point is that it doesn't matter how much private security you have, he's still going to feel obligated to-
He's still obligated, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, very much so. This is our, this is our community, it's my responsibility to provide that public safety, not that I don't trust private security, but they have a different mission than we have. And I will have officers out there for this event. That's my responsibility to make sure that the public is safe, that businesses around there are safe, and so I take that responsibility very seriously, so.
I'm exhausted talking about this.
Well, are there further questions before we create a motion on this item?
And counsel, I'll lastly add, I've left the times blank so that you could tell us what that's going to be. The Patriots Parade, the folks are not going to be out of there by noon.
No, I don't think they are.
I suggest maybe 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM.
And then also, I'd like the motion to consider, as we discussed, blocking off that far west lane for emergency access, or I mean, leaving it, leaving-
Having the emergency easement separate from the public and then starting at 2:00? And we're all in agreement to that?
If there's a motion on the table for that, that'd be something-
Motion to approve 7B, right?
The request for special events?
I know, I got to get to, it's not on here, because we have it.
I know, you're going to have to get creative, Sarah.
I know. Motion to approve the special event pursuant to city code, section 18801, for Salt City Brewing Company with the changes of the easement access for emergency services and for the time to start at 2:00 PM instead of noon.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Further discussion, comments from anyone else? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldier?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Cyrus Day Carvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight, report of city officials.
Okay, let's start with you, Sarah.
I started with me last time.
Oh, I did? Okay, well, let me start, let me start with Nancy. Thanks for the mic.
I really have nothing, nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have anything this morning.
Okay.
What about you, Steve?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for bringing this up, bringing this event to us, and we need more like that, and we'll try to work together with everybody else on this, so. Other than that, I was out to some of the events that Black Lives Matter, I think it went very well. Mr. Police Chief, you did very well on your speeches that you made, I was impressed, and I was proud of you to be our chief. I think we all need to get involved and need to start talking, and this is the first step. It just doesn't, this doesn't have blacks, Hispanics, and everybody is going to be grateful for this, too. It's going to help every, all of us, and even, all of us will be helped by this, so we all have to come together. We're making the first step by talking, that's the biggest thing, so I commend you in what you're doing, and I think we're going to, this is going to be good for us, so one step at a time.
Yes, I echo those words, too. I really think that through the events, I'm hoping that especially bridging that communication, because I do feel that a lot of people are butting heads where we could actually come together to get along, you know, and really focusing on what we all agree with and not everything that we disagree with. And so I really feel that the first step to breaking that and getting people to start coming together and like building that unity and building that, and having us focus on what we do agree on, is it's going to be through, through events, through talking, through communication, because we really, there's so many people, and I know they're out there on social media, and you've got two people that totally agree with equality and totally agree that racism is wrong, but yet they're still fighting over some small things, and how do we build that relationship, build that trust, and really come together and, and get that unity? And I think, I think our community can do it, and I really think that we should all, all come together to, to face this and come together, come out stronger in the end, together. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, thanks for those comments. I had a few things, if you'll indulge me. We've talked about a lot of different community events that are going to be taking place in the next few weeks, third Thursday, this Thursday, Juneteenth this Friday, the July 4th parade on July 4th, and now the Brew Fest. And I just want to encourage people as we start to gather again in these, in these large groups, that we remain cautious so that our community isn't put in a position where we ever, ever have to close down our economy again. We, we don't want to see that happening, so I really encourage people to take these public health, safety protocols seriously, consider wearing a mask, wash your hands, distance, so that we can continue to see our community thrive. I wanted to remind people that if you're interested in applying for the CDBGCV funds, I believe that deadline is today at 5:00 PM. Again, the city has $132,000 in funds for small businesses who might need them, and the county also got $132,000. So if you live in the city but maybe operate a business in the county, I wanted you to be aware of that. It's really wonderful news that the county also got approval for those funds. One thing that city manager and I have been discussing a little bit about that I wanted to touch on were, is the inspection violation letters going out, and how much, you know, leeway we're giving people, want to make sure that we're being as mindful of people's limitations to pay in this environment. And so Jeff had put together a few numbers, and I didn't know if you wanted to share those?
Be happy to.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I don't have the numbers on me, but the, the occurrence with COVID has resulted in a much longer extended process for compliance than what the city might typically offer. And in those cases, certainly they're docketed if they advance to the point of becoming a court case. That system also had its delays and time availability that would have allowed people to comply probably to a greater degree. I will point out that the majority of our cases probably don't involve significant dollars when it comes to repair. We're talking mostly about trash and debris on the lawn and tall grass. So if anyone's familiar with the county landfill, you can take your stuff out there for free, that doesn't cost a dime, just have to get it there. And to mow your grass, there's probably a slight cost implication there, but it's not like we're asking you to rebuild your house. So the majority of our items are low impact when it comes to actual cost to the resident. So it was probably good for us to, to look at that and to know what those cases look like as far as the totality of what we're doing, because what we'll often hear is maybe an individual case, or someone feels aggrieved, maybe it's a roof case, they have to put a roof on their house, they're 18 months into the compliance and they haven't done it, we finally took them to court. Some of those stories do have kind of a sad side to them, because there's major costs associated with perhaps a roof being put on a home. And so those are the ones, a lot of times, I think that the community hears and resonates with when they hear a big dollar sign on a compliance effort that results in prosecution, when the reality is, I would say 70, 80% of our cases involve taking trash to the landfill and mowing your grass.
Yeah.
So that's the show for you.
Yeah. Well, one thing we also discussed was maybe revising the letter that goes up for violations. It's pretty draconian right now, and it kind of sets up a friction between the city and the person receiving it, the resident. So I know that we're also looking at that, and maybe kind of more of a friendly reminder that we do have code, and you're outside of that code right now, but that's a lot of the feedback I've been getting from people who have heightened emotions anyway because been getting from people who have heightened emotions anyway because of, um, you know, all that twenty twenty has brought, um, so, looking forward to seeing that new language. Um, the last thing I wanted to bring up is, um, fireworks, I know the city is working on, um, securing sponsorships for our fireworks display on July fourth, and RCB Bank has stepped up, uh, with a sponsorship for part of that, so we're still looking for, uh, one or two other cosponsors, but I wanted to publicly thank them, um, for helping us come together and celebrate as a community on July fourth, so, that's all I have. Over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. In reference to, uh, the notification that residents do receive, we're bound by statutory guidelines on what those letters are supposed to say and those notices. And while we can't exclude that language, what we can do is maybe change the heading of it, and call it a courtesy notice, and you are hereby informed, and thank you and please, and put a more personal tone to it, and of course, the disclaimer at the bottom suggests that if you don't, and if you fail to comply, we unfortunately would have to take these following actions as necessary. Uh, I was at a previous city where we did that, it was very important to have that message, number one, valid for prosecution, but number two, um, perhaps a slightly friendlier tone. And all cities suffer from this, because generally what you do is you copy over your statutory guidelines for the language, and you know that you meet the standard. So that's how that happens, I don't think it's necessarily was an intentional-
Absolutely not, yeah.
-situation on any city's part, but it's pretty common that, uh, those notices are worded that way, we'll work on that, looking forward to that. Uh, I accompanied with the mayor yesterday a meeting where we discussed the state fair, and that was with county officials, and the whole magnitude of issues were discussed, as you might imagine, and on top of the issues that we're having to deal with, with COVID, of course, we also are dealing slightly, I think, with some politics of being forced to local decision-making versus being shoved back to the state level. This is a state event, state property, um, what the consensus of the group was, is that we have a communication to the governor and some of her immediate, uh, associates, that uh, this really is a state decision, and I think we were united in that discussion, that we would have a communication, that would be a companion communication with the county, that would go out to that effect, uh, and we would put that out, that would be on city letterhead, and it would, uh, maybe not be a formal binding resolution of this body, but certainly one that shares the opinion of all, uh, staff would support that. Um, Mayor, am I out of line on any of that? I think that's-
No.
-how it turns, there was a lot of things discussed, so, thank you. Also, drainage ditch mowing, want to remind residents that, yes, it is convenient, and we're not real happy about it either, but as far as our cost savings and curtailment of services to absorb some of the revenue shortfalls, uh, we are having to change the frequency of mowing on the drainage ditches. It's not to say we're not going to mow them at all, but it is impacting the frequency. I think even in a good year, most people would like to see them mowed more often, and certainly this is not what I would call a good financial year, so you're going to see it mowed even less frequently. Um, I've been fielding quite a few emails in that area, and, uh, it, it's frustrating when you live next to one of those, I understand it, I get it, uh, we do have you on the list, and at some point, hopefully real soon, we'll get that, uh, accomplished with the reduced staff that we have on hand, uh, as compared to a typical year. Also, you all are hearing, I'm certain, uh, the Spark Grant. The Spark Grant is kind of a big deal for us in Kansas, and it's the allocation and distribution of, uh, some serious dollars that will be handed out to cities based on how much suffering they've encountered through COVID. And there's some different dollars that come into play as far as what each city can expect to receive, uh, but in our case, and in the county's case, we're working together, we have to wait for the county to come up with parameters for distribution of that money, otherwise they're held liable to a pretty strict standard. And I'll also point out that there are two major counties in the state that have already received these funds, because they're an allocating source, and the rules are so cumbersome and tricky that they are holding those idle funds until they absolutely have the rules formulated for distribution. Um, so, it's not really a matter of hassling the county to get the dollars released quicker, it's really more a finesse of the policy as to how it'll be worded and structured, so that everyone's on the same page. Once that happens, and that resolution comes from the county, staff will then bring a resolution to you all to act on, so that we can do our part in that, uh, we already pretty well know what the pro forma on that's going to look like, and we're prepared and ready to do that, so we'll be hitting the ground running quick when that happens. Uh, that came up a little bit yesterday, too, with the mayor, and that was a, a good discussion to have. Uh, also, Ryan informs that we are at a point where we are ready to review some of the CDBGCV grant applications, for which the mayor indicated today is the deadline for, and he is looking for a, uh, special call meeting with you all, uh, with the suggestion that middle of next week would be favorable, based on the timing of the applications and the review prior to that. Is there an appetite for having a meeting like that?
Just plan. Well, I had a-
Next Tuesday?
A special city council meeting on the calendar for Tuesday at nine anyway, did we have that?
I don't have that down, but-
That's been the one that we talked about.
We talked, yeah, it kind of went, there wasn't anything definitive.
No, it wasn't anything specific.
That would certainly fit the bill, that, uh, that would be a time that would work.
Nine AM, June twenty-third?
How does that work for you two?
In the morning?
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, I'll do it, yeah.
I guess, I prefer evening meetings, but-
Nine o'clock, June twenty-third?
Thank you, thank you all. Uh, Mayor, that's all I have, I'll rest for questions, thank you.
Any questions?
Um, you touched base on the mowing, that's going to be, um, not as frequent, I keep getting questions about alleyway-
Grading.
Grading. How has that been affected?
It's been impacted as well.
And, so it's going to be a slower frequency as well?
It hasn't stopped, but it is something that is, uh, being impacted-
Okay.
-by staff, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, are we going to get copies of the grant, or is Ryan going to just give us a summary before that meeting on the twenty-third?
These are the actual applicants, aren't they?
These are actual applicants, and my anticipation is unless there's some major proprietary information on those-
Being recommended or selected?